Good evening.
Day, all nerds.
The mic's on? Okay. Good to see everybody here this evening. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. At this time, would we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Gunther?
Here.
Mr. Beckman?
Here.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Present.
Mrs. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Okay, would you all please stand and join the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Conkle, would you like to review the agenda for us?
Yes, sir. Good evening. So we have two presentations tonight. We have the Morgan Elementary, and we also have mock trial that will give our presentations. Under the superintendent section, there are three overnight field trips for your approval. There are 10 administrators up for contract extensions, and then there's some personnel items. Mr. Casser, you're going to talk about the treasure section?
Sure. The treasure section, we have a handful of items tonight, including a service agreement with the Hamilton County ESC, and that is for some additional gifted services using our restricted gifted funding from the state of Ohio. We also have two resolutions to close out Segment One OFCC projects, which, believe it or not, dates back to 2008. Renovations that happened at RMS and Elda. The state is just now getting around to closing out those projects. So we'll be closing out officially those two things tonight with these resolutions. And then our normal handful of reports, our cash summary, general fund report, and investment report from Redtree.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Do we have, let's go to the, well, we don't need to approve the agenda. Let's go on to the review, approval, correction of minutes. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Corrections? Okay. If not, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Motion's approved. Thank you very much. Let's move on, and I believe we're going to have the mock trial first. Is that correct?
Yep. We're going to switch the order of the presentations. So Mrs. Butts and Mrs. Ferriss, you are up. So thank you for coming.
Ms. Butts?
You can stand wherever you want.
Do you guys want to stand up? The, oh, thank you. You know, fancy with a microphone. Oh, that's hot. Better? Okay. Come up here so they can see you. Yeah, all the way up there. They want to celebrate you. Good evening, members of the Board and community and staff. I'd like to take just a few moments of your time to highlight the outstanding work of the high school mock trial team. Mock trial, which consists of eight students, competed at the state competition for the first time ever last weekend. The team, led by Erica Ferris and assisted by our SSO, William Crock, includes the following members: Peyton Banks, Ashley Ferris, Austin Ferris, Cynthia Hildebrand, Connor Hudak, Eva Johnson, Blake Johnston, Arium Sauerlin. RHS was one of only 28 teams in the state to make it to the competition. Many schools have multiple teams, even some local schools have multiple teams. So to be one of 28 is quite the accomplishment. While competing at state, our students received multiple awards. Peyton Banks and Ashley Ferris received Outstanding Witness, and Connor Hudak received Outstanding Attorney. Mock trial was not at Ross High School when I attended many years ago. So I was not familiar with what mock trial was or what they had to do to actually compete. And as I learned what they do to prepare for their season, I was amazed. At the beginning of their season, they're given 223 pages of case law and information on characters. They're then assigned roles in the case based on that information and have about two months-ish to memorize all of that information and their parts before they have to present their first case competitively. Witnesses are required to memorize large amounts of information, sometimes completely unknown to them, and be able to answer questions as that character. For example, Ashley Ferris became an expert on car rehabilitation and memorized the parts of the cars, was able to explain how those car parts fit into the car and what that does to the car's value. So they don't just prepare to be questioned by their peers who are acting as attorneys. They also prepare to answer cross questions from other schools. The attorneys are required to know case law as well as the material about all of the witnesses. They're required to present opening and closing arguments to the court. And as an English teacher, I was very impressed with the rhetorical arguments our kids presented. They did a fantastic job and added their own unique flair with multiple movie references. Attorneys need to be able to question their witnesses and cross the witnesses from other schools based on the case. They're responsible for objecting when other schools are not following court rules, and they did a great job holding other schools accountable. Overall, mock trial was one of the most impressive things that I've ever seen as an educator. I can't believe the amount of work that these students put into this, all of them, while balancing extracurriculars and a full course load of advanced classes and CCP classes and all of the other things. Most of the ones that aren't here aren't here tonight because they're doing other extracurricular activities tonight. So they're very, very active young students. Mock trial is a mashup of theater and ad-libbing that requires a huge amount of brain power and is incredibly entertaining to watch. I hope you enjoy, I hope you will join me in celebrating their first, but definitely not their last, time of going to state. Good job, guys.
Can we ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Did you have an attorney that was assisting you?
So this is the first year that we did have an attorney. She only met with us once because they have busy trial, like cases that they're, you know, preparing for. So that is an area that we're a little bit deficient in compared to the other schools that we compete against. Most of the other schools, especially when you get to the regional and the state level, you see that they travel with their attorney. Their attorney is the one that helps them. Like, they take the prominent lead, whereas our school, they just get me. Yeah.
Maybe you have a law degree in your future.
Very doubtful.
And so I think those cases typically, if I recall, are cases that are kind of on the cutting edge of the law. You know, things that aren't totally, have been decided sometimes in the courts. They're things usually pretty timely. What were the particulars of this case, just for curiosity's sake?
So this case, do you guys want to? Connor? Why don't you? Okay. So Connor was one of our two attorneys. We had Connor Hudak and Eva Johnson. They both double-sided as attorneys. So that meant that they had double the workload. They had to know pretty much every single witness. And Connor did a lot of work outside of our actual, like, practice time, learning case law. So go ahead.
So this case was definitely different from last year as it had two distinct things we had to prove. So Ash Espinoza, the defendant, played by Cynthia, was in a money laundering scheme, and they stole $80,000 from the high school and then $320,000 from various other sources. And we had to decide whether or not she was the leader or Harley Diallo, played by Arium, was the leader. That was our first thing we had to prove, using other court cases that had leadership factors. And if the state proved that Cynthia was the leader of the conspiracy, we had to then further prove that by taking her 1967 Chevy Camaro would not violate the Eighth Amendment for excessive fines. So there were two different burdens of proof that each side had to prove and disprove.
That sounds pretty cool. What do you think's something that the students, that you really learned from participating in this? If you were going to share with other students, you know, what would you tell them about what you learned?
I first joined for, like, the acting experience because I'm big into theater, but I feel like I learned a lot more about how our judicial system works. And I think a lot about how sometimes there's a lot of bias that goes into everyday life, and we really see that in the courtroom, and we're, like, face-to-face with it in our everyday lives as well. So it's kind of like how to deal with that.
Okay. I feel like usually the Ohio mock trial focuses a lot on civil cases. Like, last year, I think it was Fifth Amendment that we focused on. So each year that we do this, we really get to dive in deeper on what our rights are as people of the United States. And I think we can look at, because a lot of these times, these cases are not like, oh, it's obvious that this does or does not do this. It's like super close, and that's why you can argue it. So I think it's really good to see, like, these are our rights, and this is, like, how difficult it can be to rule in a case like this.
So I do want to become an attorney when I grow up. So a lot of this is the law education, the preparing me for college. But one of the things that people who don't want to be an attorney can get is the public speaking. It's a lot of public speaking. I have a five-minute closing I have to give to judges, everyone. And then just learning how to make an argument, prove yourself, and then respectfully disprove other people and formulate your own claims. So that'll definitely help in later in life.
Will you all be back here next year or are you seniors? You're a senior. Okay.
So we are losing just two members of the mock trial team. So we are hoping to be able to recruit a couple more people to add to the team so we can further compete. And it's very impressive to watch these students. I mean, they are arguing in front of, there was a federal district court judge that was there. There was an attorney who worked for the Attorney General's Office. So these are not just, like, low-level judges. These are, like, high-level individuals that they're making formal arguments in front of them, that they have to articulate themselves.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again. We're proud of all of you.
All right. We have Mr. Perry, Morgan Elementary. Welcome, Mr. Perry.
How loud do I have to be, Josh? Do I have to use a mic or not?
It's going on YouTube, man.
Okay. Once again, great opportunity to be here. I appreciate it. Teachers, Board of Education, some of you are new. So what I thought I would do today, we have our students have Urban Air tonight, so the chances of me getting students here was going to be pretty slim. And then my counselor was supposed to help. She's got the flu, so kind of today I was kind of Plan B or C in it. So what I thought I would do is kind of bring everybody up to speed on what it takes to provide supports to the elementary. So as I go through here, some of the things you might understand, some things you may not. So first of all, I'll start out, we have our mission statement. That is something that we review, we take a look at, and, you know, we want to make responsible contributions. We want the students within their communities. It also ties into our mindset. Morgan students are responsible, respectful students in the community and so forth. So you can read through that. Morgan math vision was something new this year. We were in a partnership with the high-quality instructional materials, and a company came in, and we worked on math. We spent a couple PD days looking at math PD. We also, as a staff, developed a math vision. So that was really a good activity. The teachers were very engaged. So then, once we established that, the partnership came in, and we looked at the math envisioned, which is our math program. We dug deep into that content, and how can we take that content and make it more rigorous for our students? So that was quite a task, but well worth it. We're still in that partnership. They'll be back to do some things. So this slide, I thought, takes a look at growth requires a focus on creating school culture that supports academic, social, and emotional development with children, for the whole child. Five years ago, six years ago, mainly academics is what we dealt with. Especially since COVID, social-emotional learning has heightened tremendously. The number of students that we have that reach Tier Three, and when I talk about that, you understand, is probably 15 more kids. I mean, it really has heightened. It's probably one of the biggest changes that I've seen in my career that affects the culture. So I felt we've always had a good culture, but I think you have to continue to provide things to help that culture grow, not only for students but for staff. That's another thing that we've tried to do at Morgan. So what I call this is our Morgan MTSS 101. So basically, we are looking at the multi-tiered support systems. And to the left, you'll see your RTI. That's your academic supports. PBIS, we have a PBIS program. And SEL, we have a social-emotional support program. To the right, you will see a tier. And I know all the teachers have seen this. If you haven't, basically, that is a normal tier. If you take a look, you have academics and behavior. Like I said, 10 years ago, it was mainly academics. Behavior was added on. So through your normal programs, 80% of your kids are in that Tier One. That's the core curriculum and everything else. 15%, you need to move on to Tier Two. That's targeted intervention, whether it be academics or behavior. And then 5% is your intensive intervention. Typically, that's your special ed, but not always. And then, once again, as for behavior, those are the students that receive CADLIS. We have therapy come in or go to another therapist outside. So our positive behavior intervention supports, that is something that we had. We had our Fantastic Friday. We had, you know, we had our growth mindset. Last year, we had an opportunity, and it's called PACS, and they came in and trained every one of our staff. It was free. It was probably about a $4,000 to $5,000 training. They came in, trained every staff on what it takes to be a PACS leader and be a PACS contributor. And then this past year, they've trained probably four or five staff members to go on beyond the regular to more of the Tier Two and Tier Three programs.
What's PACS stand for? P-A-X, is it?
Yeah. PACS, I should know it. Peace, Productivity, Health, and Happiness. So Talawand, I believe, does it. And like I said, if you research it, you can find a lot. It's a well-researched program. And like I said, Mara was supposed to be here, could get into the deeper pieces of it. She is the coordinator of that. But it's well researched on how it makes a difference with academics, behavior, and everything. And as you see, there's a Tier One. That's everyone. Tier Two, we have envisioned groups, PACS heroes. Tier Three, that's where you get into more behavior plans. And you take a look at common language, clear expectations, positive reinforcement, and so forth. So some of the PBS things that we do, as we texted, we have PBIS, we have Fantastic Friday. Students are recognized throughout the day for being respectful, responsible, problem solvers. Teachers give them cards. Then we draw, and they get prizes off the will. Also, our students, as part of the PACS, every morning and every day after school, we read what we call Toodles. Instead of Tattles, they're Toodles. They compliment staff, students, whoever. So staff write them for students and other staff, students write them for staff and other students. So we read those. Here's somewhat of an example of one of our lessons. I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, but it'll just kind of give you an idea. And this is Tara Smith. I don't know if you can hear. It's not coming through.
So the beginning part will be me teaching and you writing. And then the back part will be you writing. So knowing that those are the things that we'll be doing, how can you be a PACS leader during that time? So think about what do you want to do more of? What do you want to hear more of? Feel more of? See more of? So think about it before, I'll pull some PACS sticks. Think about what do you want to hear more, see more, feel more of? Okay, PACS. Logan, can you tell me something that you would like more of? Okay. More listening. Thank you. I love that. Faith, tell me what you would score up as we move into this PACS year.
I'd like to hear more quiet.
Okay. And quiet, more quiet. So that will help us listen and learn. And one more PACS, Abigail?
See more pens on paper.
Okay. So thank you for going on to that part. When we get to the writing part, we like to have our pen on our paper. That helps us to get, enjoy this from someone else's perspective. This is... Just some...
So let's get all of our teachers to train. Tara Smith, she actually went through the vision training to become more involved with the PACS programs. Social-emotional supports, once again, that is something that we have our SEL program for. And that is Second Step. And once again, with the social-emotional...
Microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Second Step, Tier One. Our counselor does character lessons. We have the PACS program. We have staff wellness. And as you can see, every student receives that. Tier Two is where we go to about 15%. As we said, we have 14% that go to Tier Two. Tier Three, these are students that are involved with CADLIS that receive therapy in the school. We have 7%. Once again, approximately five. And then we have students that we would actually have on here, but to be in CADLIS, your insurance has to pay, and they don't have the insurance, or they have the insurance, but the insurance won't pay. So once again, that's something that, once again, five to seven years ago, did not see that. So social-emotional supports. Here, we're looking at the SEL program, which is Second Step. And this is Mara, our counselor, doing one with kindergarten, and they are two.
Good job. Let's take some ram breath together. Ready? Deep breath into your nose.
We always do that.
That helps us to calm down. Right. Remember our calm-down steps. You guys remember the stuffy? All right. Let's try, you guys, let's play your dance on. You always tell me, say, something, you're feeling, say a belly breath. I want to hear.
What's interesting is our PTO meetings, we talked to parents, we talked about Second Step, and the parents say their students will come home, and they'll say, mommy, daddy, you need to take a belly breath. It's amazing. It was so cute. But, you know, the PTO even recognizes that they've seen some change with the SEL program, Second Step. And I do believe, Jake, help me out, but we're going to the online version of Second Step next year. Yeah. So the academic piece, so the academics, RTI, we call it Child Study Process. That is how we look, that is looking at the academics piece. And some of the beliefs for the Child Study Process be proactive, not reactive. It's a building-wide initiative. We need to think outside the box, and we got to perform outside the box. It's not a special ed program, and data is used to guide our decisions, and progress monitoring is an assessment process. The CSP team, Response Intervention Team, is your teacher, your counselor, Title I reading teachers, intervention specialists, our speech and language teacher, our psychologist, and our principal, which is me. We reviewed student data. We completed intervention plan, which is called RIMP, Third Grade Guarantee. We have to do RIMPs on anyone who is not at where they need to be for reading. Students receive targeted intervention, research-based intervention. Assessments are used to monitor progress and inform our instruction. So once again, it is an approach that we keep up. For example, if you've heard something called dyslexia modules, we had to take many hours of those. We had to do all of this testing, hours upon hours, of our title teachers testing kids because we weren't doing a great job finding dyslexia. We had probably six kids hit Tier Two of the dyslexia. All six of them have already been identified as either intellectually delayed or a learning disability. So we didn't miss any. So the Child Study Process, we felt, has been very effective, and that was another thing.
Tom, what percent of people that do the Child Study Process do end up with an IP eventually?
It would be just like our numbers right now, 5%, 7%. It would be within that realm.
So we're helping a lot of kids through the CSP.
Yes. So our philosophy, Greg, good question Greg asked. So what we look at is, it's rare that we identify a special ed kid in kindergarten or first grade because, once again, there is the process, there is help, and it's a continuum. Once they're in second grade, we start looking pretty seriously. Now, NK1-2, if we suspect not a learning disability, autism, some of those higher, you know, higher-needs students, we catch, that's a little different. But SLD, we kind of wait. And that's what, I think, cuts down on a lot of them because we are a continuum. We've had students that it took until third grade that kicked it in gear. So that's the process. That's why I put up there, it's not a special ed program. It starts in the summer before. So in the summer, I take a look, and the counselor and I, mainly me, because, as you know, I'm a data person. We look at all of our universal assessments. We look at the K3 diagnostic, which is MAP. We look at DIBELS. We look at DRAs. We look at STAR. I put them all together. I put them into an equal NCE, and that determines our title. That's our first approach to intervention. Then we take a look at special ed. The master schedule, teacher schedules, is geared around these students' needs. So once I get all of that, I let the teachers know, this is when you have to have your reading block. This is when you have to do this. Because we want to make sure that we have them scheduled, that our title teachers have access to them. And for the most part, once we start the school year, we don't miss too many. Beginning of the year, before the first day, counselor or intervention specialist sits down, takes a look at some of the kids on intervention plans. Our title teachers, I meet with them in the summer. We go over their schedule. So pretty much, we try to have everything scheduled and ready to go. This year, I was so happy because it was ready, and then dyslexia hit. And they took a lot of time. So we'll see. And then we start our Tier Two administered universal assessments, and we schedule our CSP meetings. Our CSP meetings align themselves with our universal assessments. Someone asks, why are you in trimesters? Once again, everything lines up on trimesters. That we're able to look at report cards, we're able to look at the universal assessments, and everything that we have to help determine part of that CSP program. So the academic curriculum components that we use. We have a new foundational skills program called Core 95. That is Core, your foundation skills are your phonics, your phonemic awareness. That's a new program this year. Teachers love it. Obviously, there's hiccups in a little bit here and there, learning a new program, but right now, we're feeling really good about it. We have a new Title I reading intervention program. It's also Core 95. Part of the Third Grade Guarantee said kids have to have a high dosage of tutoring from a science of reading program. So that's what we picked, that's why we had to pick that for our intervention program. Still learning that program. We also use some M-Class, which is Amplify, to do some of that also. 2024-25, the Board of Education has to adopt a new science of reading program from a list. And if you didn't know that, you do now. At least, that's what the state says. So our school, we have to adopt it, but we can pilot it. It's kind of interesting right now. You'll be hearing more about it. It's really, it's kind of like, as they say, the cart before the horse sometimes at the State Department. We are in the second year of a new math program, Envision Math. Once again, going very well. Our staff is very pleased with that program, and we've seen a lot of good gains from that program. And then, like I said, we brought the partnership in with the HQIM. It really helped strengthen that. Some of the computerized programs we use, Freckle Math and Reading for grades K2, Success Math and Reading for grade three, Study Island Math and Reading, grade three, Accelerated Reader, grades one through three, and STAR goes along with that. Reading A to Z, grades K3, and RAS Kids, grade K3. So those are the type of programs we use. They're not a curriculum program. They're more for some intervention and some enrichment. Our universal assessments, as I talked earlier, are used for identifying as far as... Our universal assessments, as I talked earlier, are used for identifying as far as where students' needs are. We use the MAP, the DIBELS. The DIBELS is also used highly for our progress monitoring, uh, classroom assessments and everything else. It depends on where your kids are. If your kids are in tier one, your progress monitoring is going to be done with a teacher with classroom assessments. Tier two, it's going to be done with the title teacher more frequently. And then tier three is going to be your special ed teacher or possibly title, depending, more frequently than tier two. DRAs, we use those at all grade levels. Uh, standardized tests for, um, assessment read, that's the STAR. That gives us a grade level where they are. Data, 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 and data capture. Once again, we have a lot of data points. We use them. Uh, I think our goal is to continue to get better at utilizing them more efficiently. I know we have plans, PD, Jen and I have been working on some PD, to, to take a look at some of these and make sure that we're using what we have and efficiently. Sometimes you can overload with data and that's always the goal, is to make sure that we're using it and it tells a story. I always feel one data point is not enough. You need to have at least two to kind of back some of that up. So, universal assessments. I'm going to show you some quick data reports and go through them pretty quickly. So the MAP, this would be one that the teacher gets. It's hard to see, uh, but with this one, it kind of tells you where your kids are. The top bar is your kids that were in the 80th percentile or above. The next bar is 60th, so basically is a quintile. So that kind of gives you an idea of where your kids are. Uh, same type of concept there. That's just like a brief overview. The good thing about MAP, it has a student profile and it's actually interactive. What's nice about that, it breaks it down. And what's really interesting is this student scored 99 percentile in growth and 99th on achievement. You're thinking, hey, what do they need a profile for? But if you look closely, suggested area of focus, relative strength with this area here, language and writing, top kid, but they need to focus a little more on that. So it goes back to that tier one. Lot of, lot of people think you leave tier one alone, they're doing okay. No, you can't. We also have the obligation to enrich kids, take kids up higher because when you get the report card and everything else, you talk about performance index, which I'll get to.
How are we communicating this information to parents?
So what we do now, Greg, is we used to have a progress report. And it really was, I mean, elementary teachers, we just have Jen. It basically was a checklist. It didn't tell them anything. We did it because, so now, for our progress reports, we send home the MAP scores, the STAR scores, the DRA scores. We send all of these home and there's a parent report for this and it gives a narrative. It shows their growth over time. And then, uh, they usually line up close to our parent teacher conferences, right Jen? So we go over that with the parents. So it gives them some really informed information.
Mr. Perry, would this be something that is embedded in that Aubrey system for parents?
I think we can, yeah, that, it is.
Okay, so parents could access it too.
Yeah, thank you. And this was, this one is MAP. This one's kind of neat. I like this one. Uh, Jen can tell you, I love this one actually. So what this does, this is the quadrant. And what you look at, obviously, you look at high achievement, high growth is your top quadrant. So as a teacher, that's where you want to see, this gives you a quick snapshot. Where did my class perform? This one is a growth. This one is from fall to winter. So as you can see, we have, that's pretty good. We have all the, uh, almost all the kids that are up above in that quadrant. We have a few down here, but not good, not, the growth wasn't as high as it could have been, but they're still achieving. So once again, as I tell teachers, every one of those tell a story. You got to figure out what that story is. Did we provide the intervention or what happened? And sometimes there's things that happen that, you know. And then down here, you have all the scores. Here's another one. Uh, once again, as you can see, um, this one, almost all of them were in the top quadrant, high achievement, high growth. This one wasn't, wow. But what is that? That's high growth. So with high growth, that student drew, grew a lot. So now, without growth, I don't know if you can have great achievement. Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't, but you got to get the growth to get the achievement. So my guess is that student's growth is up there. The achievement also improved. And this is one that I use to take a look at and get a, um, an idea of at the end of the year. So this one goes from fall to spring. And what it looks at, it looks at the entire grade level. So what I look right here is the conditional growth percentile. So this grade level, they grew 99 percentile as a grade. So what that means is if you take that grade kindergarten, you compare them to all kinds of kindergarten classes in the state of Ohio and the nation, they were right there. They grew as well or better than 99, 99 out of 100. I'll take that every day. 89, I'll take that all day long. 92 and 87. So that's what I kind of look at. That's kind of a gauge, a barometer, a barometer to say, hey, yeah, you as a grade level grew. And then we also have that for teachers. They can find the same information. And then this is a very similar type of, let me get it down, it's not working here. And what this does, the same thing. This is broken into quadrants. That's one that I can take a look at. And these are actually grade levels. If I toggle, every grade level was in the high growth, high achievement percentile. So that's a pretty good little graph to look at. And then what this is, I'll go through this quickly, but this takes a look at our progress monitoring. This is a student. This is where they started, the beginning of the year, whether the progress monitoring. When they hit this, they're done with that skill. So this student maxed out, went to another skill, went to another skill, went to another skill. And you can't really see it here, but what this is, this student right here, composite at the beginning of the year was 309, middle of the year is 390. They benchmarked all of these. They have it here because we haven't progressed monitored and taught that yet. So that is where we do the progress monitoring for the tier two students. So that's kind of a nice little one. Let's see, let me go back. And I could have probably given you a million of them, but. This is our data capture. This is probably one of the neatest things. So what this does, this encapsulates all these, uh, universal assessments, everything that we use, puts them all in a snapshot. So what's nice about this is the tabs down below, this is third grade, second grade, let me see in here, and first grade. This is my, these are my COVID kids. These were the third graders that in first grade, 25 of them to 28 of them had virtual kindergarten. Once again, calling Jen again, Jen, tell them what virtual kindergarten really means. Nothing. So what's really interesting here is I can go to their first grade, and I just pulled this here, so here is first grade. Red is not good. And as you can see, lot of red and a lot of yellow, starting out the year. And then I can go over here and I can sort this. Okay? We still got a little bit of red and a little bit of yellow, not the greatest. So then when I go to second grade, the same thing. I'm going to get about what I got, starting out in the fall. I've never had classes like this. These are the kids, not only were they kindergarten virtual, in first grade, they had masks on all day. Or I'm sorry, kindergarten, the ones that did come had masks all day. They could meet with the teacher 12 minutes a day. That's it. No more than 12 minutes. They couldn't share materials. They couldn't have group activities. They were isolated. So we had a lot going against us. But second grade made some improvement. If I take a look here and I do that, okay, still up there. Not bad. We're getting there. Third grade, I take this group. Ah, okay, you see less red now. If you look over here, you see less red. You still see some yellow. And then I take the winner. You see how excited I get on this stuff? Because this is neat. So we have, we've narrowed some gaps. By spring, I'm hoping, you know, we had 40 kids in first grade that were red and yellow. Now by the winter time, we're down to about eight to 10. So that's quite an accomplishment and that's because of our intervention program and our teachers and they recognize it in our title program. And then, once again, we keep track of everything on this. Uh, over here, this is our promotion score. Uh, the ones in red means they haven't gotten it yet, but we still got a lot of time to go. Knock on wood, we've never had a kid that didn't hit the retention or the promotion. I'm hoping this year isn't the first year. So that's some data that we use. So just some highlights. State report card, if I didn't have an opportunity to brag on the staff, I am now. So state report card, only Butler County school with five-star rating in all areas. Overall, we got a five-star, achievement five-stars, gap closing five-stars, early literacy five-stars. Highest performance inducts of all schools in Butler County, 106.8 out of a possible 110.3. That's all students gifted. Students, we had 120 PI out of a possible 120 PI. Attendance rate, we had the highest attendance rate, lowest chronic absentee rate. Some more accolades. We had, our preschool is a step up to quality, five-star program. Uh, this year, we were named as one of the top Cincinnati's best elementary schools on the, I guess it's NITC, I don't know, NITC or Nishi list. Uh, these are schools that received A-plus or A-rating. And then recently, we've been nominated, um, one of 14 schools in Ohio by the, uh, Ohio, to the Department of Education, the US Department for the Blue Ribbon Award. So, uh, we're hopefully getting that process finished. We'll find out how we do. So in a nutshell, hopefully I didn't bore you too much, too much. Like I said, I love data, so it was fun for me. Greg's laughing, Chad's laughing, they're like, he does, he's a data geek. So once again, I, I can't commend our staff enough, our intervention programs enough for taking a look at the children, but not only the kids that need intervention for targeted intervention to get them where they need to be, the high kids. Our third grade scores, we have more kids in the advanced level in reading and math than the average passage rate in Ohio. So we take them above where we need to be. That is the goal. The expectations are to do that and the kids, they do well. They know that. Okay, questions?
Hey, Tom, um, what do you guys use to determine, um, like gifted students? Is that still?
Gifted, we use MAP in, um, grades two and, for the achievement, grades two and three, MAP two, five. And then we just did the cognitive ability for grade two for that. We yielded, I think, four kids in cognitive ability. And then MAP, second grade, I think we have about 15 or 20, and then third grade, about 25, something like that.
When do you find out about the Blue Ribbon Award?
We send an application and we don't find out until like October or something.
Okay, so still.
And if we get it, we get to go to DC in November of the election year.
They could probably use somebody to read the data like you, Tom.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, we'll see.
Hey, thank you very much. And I got to tell you, it's, uh, you know, you've done an impressive job. Your staff's to be commended. And, uh, in fact, you know, it's a reflection of the whole administrative team and support that we've got in place. So, uh, you make us proud. We thank you.
We enjoy it. And if you're listening now and you may have some more questions, we'd love you to.
Thanks, Mr. Perry.
Okay, at this time, uh, I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel. Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session to discuss personnel. Uh, we will resume the meeting when we come out of executive session. All those in favor of the motion?
We need to, I'll call the roll.
Have the roll call.
Yep. Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Okay, so we're back in regular session again. We've moved out of executive session. I believe we're going to have a motion to amend the agenda. Do we have that motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. We call the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Kleinfelder?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Okay, we're now looking, uh, for a motion to table item B in the superintendent's report and recommendations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion to table item B in the superintendent's report and recommendations?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. All right, so let's move on. Our next item on the agenda is our legislative report.
So, um, I don't have much, just, um, just a couple of different things that have come up here um, in the new year recently. Um, one is House Bill, and I have to find, I have a whole list here. Um, but it's been presented, um, to have all starting teacher salaries start at $50,000. So that is, I said I have like two pages of, of things here. So that's, that's one motion, but like I said, it's just been introduced within the last, um, month or so. There's also, um, an expansion of the College Credit Plus program where, uh, the state is trying to make it easier, like a path of least resistance for teachers to teach CCP classes at the high school level. And like how it is now, where kids have to give their intent by April 1st, they're going to have like two different dates throughout the year, like one in November, one in April. School safety, there was another, uh, bill proposed about having like doors in schools uh, be, be approved by fire departments everywhere from like the frame to the door, just to be safer. There's still, uh, the bill out there regarding having seat belts in buses. So that is still present. And, let's see. That's all the most recent things that we have here. EMS training, College Credit Plus. And then, uh, in the social studies curriculum, uh, back in December, to include instruction on the migration experiences and contributions of a range of communities in the social studies model curriculum. So that's been proposed and that right now is in the hearings in House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. But that is all I have, Mr. Young.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Anybody have any questions or comments for?
Who's going to pay for that $50,000 starting salary? That's what I want to know.
Are they putting in something to, I mean, obviously that would affect the first, maybe even up to five years. I, I'm not sure.
Right.
I don't have stats, but have they put any, put anything out there regarding that?
Right now, it's been, it was introduced on 212. It's House Bill 411. It's a teacher salary to increase the base teacher salary to 50,000.
Yeah, I, I don't know what it is now. Does anybody know what it is now? The state minimum?
I'm not sure. I think it's, it's either 30 or 35.
That's what I was saying. I was thinking 36. Every district, nobody's paying that money.
Right.
I mean, everybody's over that. So that'd, that'd be a pretty big jump.
Yeah.
Not that it isn't warranted, but. Your question's a good one, Mr. Kleinfelder. Who would pay for it? All right, legislative report, we had that. Butler Tech report.
All right, well, I'm proud to announce that we are on the front cover of the Student Success Newsletter for March of the 20, uh, March 24 with the Ross Initiative for True Strength, uh, led by Amy Miller, Megan Rudolph, and Rose Capicer and the whole rest of school and so forth. So we got a little, uh, good press there out of the, uh, Student Success Newsletter. Uh, the meeting was pretty short. Couple of items. They selected an architectural design group to do the Middletown Airport, which is going to be their aviation education center. It's going to be on about seven acres of property there, 120 parking spaces, 25, 20,000 square foot academic building and eight to 10,000 dollars, uh, square feet of hangar space. And it has a student capacity of about 200 that they're looking to add in the aviation areas of airframe and air mechanics. Aggressively, John keeps saying August of '25, but he probably should amend that to say the fall of '25. Sometime they're going to try and have that facility open. They also, after a long, hard battle with Miami University over several locations and then not having a location at all. then not having a location at all, have finally signed a lease agreement for 45,000 square feet of the Vora Tech Champions Old Headquarters there along the Miami River to lease that for advanced manufacturing facility they're going to put in. Butler Tech's contributing about $8 million that they got from one of those capital grants that they get from the legislature every year. And then for all of you, I also passed out an invitation to the Butler Tech All Boards Meeting, which is May 2nd. The dinner part of it is 5:00 to 6:00, but I think it starts as early as 3:00 with some of the showcases. There'll be student activities going on, I think on all the campuses. And then if you want to try and do a couple of spots, that's okay, but I usually just go to D Russell Lee for, to see what they got there, but that's a good event, good food. And if you're going to go, you need to RSVP by 412. They would like you to say yay or nay either way. And if they don't hear from you, they'll be hassling me and then I'll be hassling you about whether or not you want to go. And that's all I have for Butler Tech this month.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kleinfelter? Yeah, that Vora technology, that's going to be a really nice setup over there.
Yeah, and they left it in really, there's not a whole lot to, other than the manufacturing lab, the rest of it, the office space, classroom space, conference spaces, classroom space is, I mean, it was in pristine condition.
Yeah.
So it's really good space to.
Yeah, it's an attractive building, it should be attractive to people, the program. All right, do we have any public comments? Read or not, okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Conkle?
Yes, sir, the first item, there are three field trips for your approval. First one is the high school band going to Disney on March of 20, in March of '25. Second item is a congressional app challenge, that is this April, then the third trip is FCC LA, their state leadership conference in April of '24. So three overnight trips for your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve those trips?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the trips? Would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
The last item, personal items, there are two schedules, schedule A and D, and those are in your packet for your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we call the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay, treasures, reports, and recommendations?
Yep, have the, the five items that I mentioned earlier, I'd like to block those together in one vote if possible, so that'll be letters A through E for your approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the treasures, reports, and recommendations?
Motion. Motion.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do you want to comment on any of these, Mr. Castager, before we vote?
You know, at the beginning there, I kind of covered, again, the two resolutions are for the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission project dating all the way back to 2008 for Elda and middle school renovations. So they're just now getting around to closing out that project, believe it or not. So there is a portion of money that's left. So some of that will go back to the state, some of that's retained by us. And part of this resolution that we're approving tonight is to move those funds into our '03 permanent improvement account, which we can then use for other building and facility type of improvements. So those are the, those are the other, the primary highlights. The Hamilton County ESC agreement is for additional gifted services. So we receive funds from the state of Ohio within our foundation funding that are restricted specifically for gifted services. And this will allow us to be able to expend those funds by the end of the year and give us some additional things that are needed within the district.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Okay, do we want to go around the table here? Board members have any comments? Start over there with Mr. Kleinfelter with you.
I thought Mr. Perry did a good job, short and sweet, like always. And it's the, congratulations to the trial team, quite an accomplishment. While they were speaking and they said they only had an attorney for one time, I sat here and made a list of graduates at different schools I've been that are attorneys and there's got to be somebody that knows a retired attorney or somebody that we could get them hooked up with. I think even Mr. Noonan's son's an attorney now, one of them. So somebody ought to be able to help out and volunteer. I just don't know the timeframe that would be needed, but I think that's something we ought to work on. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Congratulations to the FCC LA members that are going to be overnight, your highway congressional app challenge overnight trip, as well as the band getting to go down to Florida next year. Those are all important things in kids' lives and they remember it. So I think it's important to support them any way we can.
Mr. Beckman?
I just want to reiterate, both Keith and Brent here, I do, I do think, I think Tom's, what he's doing out at Morgan, I think what the district as a whole is doing, and I think the mock trial, I think it just shows how great our kids are here in this district and some of the great things we are going.
Great.
Ditto. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Perry. It was, it was great and congratulations to your building, your staff, the teachers, just for getting, I mean, those five star ratings, that's very commendable. And the mock trial team, it's exciting to see the kids performing at such a high level and something that like people like don't see, but you know, I hear from my own kids, I guess the high school here, they had like their band parade through the hallway just to cheer these kids on as they went to state from swimming to mock trial. And so it's just really nice just to see the, just the amount of support that comes from, from the building itself. And then we have a couple of things, and Keith, you mentioned it in your, in your Butler Tech report, when you talked about Amy Miller. So her group of students here competed last weekend in Columbus. And I think this is a record, but she has 14 students that have made it to nationals. And that's, usually we take maybe like 12 total from our entire county. And she has like 14 kids, two of them, two groups of kids placed first at state. So they're heading off to Anaheim at the end of April, so that's pretty exciting. And then found out last week from our township trustees, one of our community organizations here that, you know, was born and raised in Ross, G Foods, was awarded some money from the township trustees there, they're supposed to get 75,000.
75,000.
Mr. Young, $75,000 to help them purchase some like refrigerated trucks to deliver food to the, the community. So that's great. So I think that was some leftover COVID dollars and then the Ram pantry is, was getting some as well. So just a lot of neat things seeing, you know, going on here in the community and just, you know, what, what kids are doing now as a product of the great education that we have here. So thanks.
Yeah, the, apparently the county had leftover funds from COVID funding and they gave each township $150,000 to spend on, to spend on assisting families in need. And they gave Ross Morgan Ministries Ram 75,000 and G Foods 75,000.
I'd rather have my taxes go down 1,000 instead of.
Well, hey, it's county money. I know, it's still our taxpayer dollars, right?
I know.
But so G Foods is, yeah, they're going to put together a mobile, a mobile food delivery that they can go out into the neighborhoods and so forth and get food to people on a, on a regular basis, I guess, is the idea. So I noticed in the finance, the committee report, finance committee report, there was a discussion there about the bring your own device. And it looked like the decision was made to, that that would not really work out very well. And so we're looking at the continued use of Chromebooks and, is that correct, Dr. Conkle?
Yeah, I missed part of that, I mean, you know, talk about, I was.
It's been a kind of an ongoing topic of conversation, so we asked Mr. Baker to put together some information, talked to a couple other districts about, you know, pros and cons of that. And so he provided a really nice update, I felt like of, you know, sort of the rationale behind why the Chromebooks are important and with the testing environment that we're in and a lot of the other security and kind of things that we're, that he deals with on a day, day to day basis, that it would be his preference that we continue to, to move forward with that.
I think I would support that decision. Are we going to be on a rotating basis to get, get back to a rotating?
We are, that was part of the conversation as well. So he's, he's got a plan to, to purchase additional devices for next year that we're working through now. And then it would become more of a, like you mentioned, a two grade band at a time cycle moving forward.
Right, so there'll be an initial purchase to make up for the least units that we got during COVID who, you can't get spare parts. I don't know if that's a shock to anybody here, but the units that we got, they couldn't get spare parts. So it's been quite the undertaking.
So we could buy new Chromebooks for fifth grade and they would use them through the eighth grade, and then new ones in the ninth grade and use them through the 12th grade. Is that what we're looking at?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. This new band would be really for like fourth through eighth grade. And then the high school devices are relatively new because we, Mr. Baker was able to secure a grant last year that, that purchased devices that the high school students are currently using now.
Okay. Fees for 24, 25, are we, will we be talking about that sooner?
So yes, we'll, we'll get with the principals and the directors and look at our fee schedule. We approve those in June or July, correct?
Well, don't we need to get them out to parents?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
At the end of the year or something, maybe typically, so they know what they'll be going into next year?
What would you like those approved?
I think by the end of the school year would probably be good.
We could have them for the May agenda.
Well, whatever, whatever you normally do, I would just.
On the May agenda.
I just hadn't heard anything. I was just curious about where, where do you think we'll be with the pay to participate fee?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think at this point, we're, you know, we haven't discussed it as far as, do we, do we lower it? Do we leave it the same? Do we raise it? We really haven't had any conversations about it. I think the, you know, the thought last year at least going into it was that the 300 would be kind of the standard, standard fee that we would stay with. But we could certainly have conversations about it and, and see where we're at and, and make a recommendation from there.
Can we get a participation update from Mr. Beck?
Absolutely.
Just compared to.
Yeah, once we get spring sports started, we'll see what kind.
They're starting.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, as far as how many, how many we're going to have, because that high fee in the past, didn't it discourage some kids from doing a third sport in the spring?
Field track.
Yeah. So it would be interesting to see where we are with that. I noticed that there was something in our email about the OSBA business honor roll. Have we done that in recent years? Submitted anybody for the business honor roll?
We have not, I don't believe so.
Okay, I was just curious. The deadline's this Friday, so I don't know that we would be in a position to do anything tomorrow, but it's something we probably want to think about in the future because it's pretty nice where they, they'll, they'll, OSBA will give you a nice plaque to present to the business that supported the district in some particular way. I know it's been done in the past a few times for people. I was just curious whether we had been doing that at all. And then I saw with the homecoming parade was going to be moved to Thursday. And that was done so everything isn't jammed in on Friday, is that correct?
Yeah, the goal is to come back to campus on that Thursday and have some type of a Pepper Alley food trucks and then the football players and cheerleaders can participate in the, in the parade. Same, same route, just moved to the Thursday.
Yeah. And we just need to make sure when the athletic director's doing the athletic schedule, we doesn't schedule.
Right. We're very aware of that, yes.
Any athletic events on that Thursday, yeah, I figured so.
Will they then take the, like the floats back to where they were building them at? Or, because I think that was like an issue that we had had before, it's like.
It had been discussed before, the question was what happens to the floats?
After the parade.
So I don't know what the answer to that is.
I like, I like it though, I like the Thursday. Because I think you can get the football team, they can never be a part of it before.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, no, I think it's, it's definitely something would be different, but good. All right, then once again, Tom, thank you, congratulations to you and your staff for a job well done. And in my former life, I coached a mock, Ohio mock trial team. And I know the kind of work that goes into that, so I really appreciate the time and effort that our staff members put into that. Anybody else? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Meetings adjourned.